Our caucus room, City Hall, 155 Dear Hill Avenue. My name is Louise McMahon and I'd like to introduce the committee members. We have Phil Curran and Paul Richello. We have Corporation founder Wes Pinter and the Director of Finance, David St. Hauer. And we have the petitioner, William Montgomery, who is the President of the Land Trust of Danbury. And the charge of this committee is to review the property tax abatement for conservation organizations. And I'll ask Les or David for your input on this, please.
This is a request, and I don't know if I have the original letter to the council. Yeah, this is a letter from the Danbury Land Trust, which is now known as...
The Land Trust of Danbury.
The Land Trust of Danbury. Seeking to have the common counsel adopt the provisions of an enabling act that provides that if a, an organization like this, a land conservation organization, for whatever reason, has paid taxes that they did not have to pay for a prior period, it was erroneously paid, or it was, it was paid as, maybe it was an error at the closing or something, and it was a donation of land, that the municipality could by resolution authorize forgiveness of that tax that was paid. In other words, abating that tax that the land trust, or whatever conservation organization is at issue had paid.
But it was taxed, that was due at the time, during, you know, for transition of property, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, but in, in larger measure, it's intended as a forgiveness mechanism so that the land trust organization is not burdened with a tax that it would not have paid had it owned the property before it got titled.
Yeah.
Okay. That's the bottom line of the statute. And the statute says that you, as the common counsel, if you want to, can, by resolution, forgive that amount of tax for this, for the organization. That's what the legislation says.
Okay. There was, Party A had some land, and Party B wanted to buy it, or it was donated to the land trust. So there was a conveyance tax that had to be paid, but didn't have to be paid, there was a, you, you, the last sentence you said, they wouldn't, it's a tax they paid, they wouldn't have had to have paid had they owned the land.
Yeah.
If they didn't own the land, if this tax preceded the transfer, why did they pay a tax? And if the previous guys had to pay the tax, why would we want to forgive that?
Well, but...
My question is then, why did the land trust wind up paying this tax? That's a, this is a simple...
Through the Chair, Bill can answer the specific question, but basically, in the simple terms, if, if Party A was a taxpaying organization, owned the property, wanted to sell it, donate it to them, and they were not tax exempt, it got to the closing, and for some reason, they ended up, car, Party B, the tax-exempt organization, ended up paying it somehow later on.
Yeah, that's my question. How did that happen?
That, and that's, there are facts in there that they may have.
We are, we are talking about property tax.
Right.
And the land owner always, always pays all the tax up to the date of closing. Because of the way that the grand list is set up, and you all know more about that than I do, there are sometimes taxes due after the closing. Now, ideally, the two attorneys at closing work out for the donor to pay that. And sometimes that, that works well, most of the time, that works quite well. I know, I know you asked me that question some months ago, Les, you know, why don't the attorneys work that out? And they, they should, and they, they often do. I, I look back since 1993, 15 years, actually 15 acquisitions in 15 years, although obviously they, you know, sometimes, some years are heavier than others. There are five cases where this, this happened. And the amount was anywhere from $23 up to $485 that the land trust had, had to pay. So the average is about $318. And, you know, I don't know whether that's, that's a lot of money to the city, but, you know, we're a small nonprofit organization, and it's, it's, it's a lot to us. I, I guess the one example I can bring up of how this happens, or why it happens, is two years ago, we got a donation from, from a church, 17 acres, you know, nice, nice property. And at, at the closing, the attorneys talked, and the church attorney said, "We're giving you land. We're a nonprofit organization too. You pay the taxes from, from here on in." And, you know, I went back and forth with Colleen on this for a, a year or more, and even your office got involved, and, you know, essentially, the answer was, we, we ended up paying, on that case, $485 between July 2008 and April of, no, I'm sorry, I got the wrong case. January of 2007 to April of, of 2008. So, so, you know, and, you know, it, it should work out, that the attorney should agree that, that the donor, or the previous owner picks up any taxes that are due based on the, the grand list going forward. And, you know, the last 15 years, 10 out of 15 cases that work that way, and, you know, a couple cases are very small, $23, $3. But the governor signed this public act on June 29th of 2007. And the wording that, or the explanation I heard was that landowners selling or donating land for conservation is good for the state, it's good for municipalities, and, and therefore the property tax laws should, you know, should not discourage that. So she signed the bill that, that, as Les says, authorizes municipalities either on a case-by-case basis, or, or on a, or, or by an ordinance.
Through the Chair, to Mr. Montgomery. Now, where, where do you, do you have a budget?
Yes.
Where do you get your money from?
Mostly through donations. In the last year or so, we've started getting some, some grants. But, so mostly, it's true...
Grants from the city, or grants from outside?
No, we've never gotten a grant from the city. We got, you know, last year, we got a small grant from the Women's Club, a small grant from Pepsi Bottling Company, got a sizable grant from the Peter and Carmen Wiscia Buck Foundation.
Now, this $200, does it come out of your personal pocket, or does it come out of your, your, the land trust?
No, no, it's the land trust. I, I often pay it out of my pocket, but then am reimbursed, so it's, the land trust pays me. So, so I don't know if I answered your question or not, but most of our money, at least up till when we got the significant grant this past year, comes from memberships and, and additional donations that members make.
Again, to the Chair, what are you real, what are you looking, what are you looking from us, from, what do you want? I mean, what, what, what do you, what will make this right, you think?
Okay. What, what we would like is for the common counsel to pass an ordinance that, that would stop tax payments as of the date of closing, which is what the public act essentially says. Whereas, under the present situation, it can go on, you know, depending on when the donation was made, it could go on for another year, year and a half after the, the closing. And, you know, again, I don't know if it's a lot of money to the city or not, but, you know, it's a lot of money for us to show up for $500 in, in property taxes.
Last, what is the downside to the city?
I don't know, $400, $500?
No.
And the down...
On this here, or, but I mean, I, I'm, I'm looking down to the future.
You mean as far as precedent?
Yeah.
Well, the precedent, this is a very narrow piece of legislation, so it only applies to what the term is nonprofit land conservation organizations. The precedent is if someone else, either Bill's, or group, or another group like his comes in, you would have to find reasons why you may not want to grant them the same consideration, and have some kind of factual basis for that. Otherwise, you have, you're facing at least unfairness, or some kind of precedent perhaps. Not that you have, you don't have to do each case the same way, but you have to look at the facts, and then, but generally, you'd be hard-pressed to deny the next person coming in, if you, if you do it for somebody else.
Through the Chair, to, what, would, would it be better off if we handled it on a case-by-case basis, rather than settle, settle an ordinance?
It doesn't matter. If you, if you do an ordinance, it's more, then you're establishing law. It probably provides, yeah, maybe it does provide a stronger basis for, for applying this to others who come in, but probably not much of a difference. It's easier administratively to do on a case-by-case basis, simply approve it by resolution. For this case, you're not bound then to a, a, a piece of legislation that's in the books, which would probably prompt people to say, "Oh, there's a law in the books now, so let's come in." And, you know, and, and now we're entitled to it. Case-by-case basis, maybe you're not quite as entitled to the same, you know, but, you know, it's a close call.
Okay.
I'd just like to, now, where would this money come to reimburse?
I was gonna ask that question, that's...
David?
I'll make a clarification. I, I want to follow the rules here, but I, I'll clarify that. You want me to do it? You know, the cases that I talked about are the last 15 years, which is six, five cases, There is no possibility under the, the, the state legislation for us to get any reimbursement, except possibly for one, one current case. Because if you look in the back of that paper, in the, I guess it's the second paragraph down, well, it, it commencing on or after October 1st, 2007, the grand list, which take, which affects taxes July 1st, 2008 on. And then it says, "In the case where there may be a payment made before the abatement is approved, it's meant to allow refunds." So as, as far as I would see, we, we would not, you know, even have the option of asking for any refunds, except possibly for the current case, on which we started paying July of 2008 through April of 2009.
I got another question for Les. What is the difference between what, what Bill just explained, somebody gave him commission land, and me as a property owner saying to the city, you know, "I got 25 feet of land here, it's no good to me, I want to give it to the city. But now I owe back taxes on that 25 feet of land for $500. Would I be coming in here looking for that, the tax payment on that?"
You might, but you don't have the, you know, the same legislation that provides...
So this would only affect...
To that kind of organization.
Yeah.
To that conservation...
What other organization would we have in the city that would fall into, you know, can you think of?
Offhand, I can't think of, that kind of organization that would fall into that classification. I don't think Tarawal would fall into that organization. It's, that's a, that's a, that's a different kind of entity. I don't know, you, you, there's probably a definition, I don't know what would come in under that, I have to look at that and see.
We, we are the only local land conservation organization in Danbury. Could there be another sometime, I guess? Now, there are other conservation organizations, you know, Nature Conservancy, Trust for Public Land, Audubon, at this moment, they don't have one acre of land in, in Danbury. But the case you mentioned, Phil, somebody has back taxes. We, we would never, never, ever accept a piece of land with back taxes on it. And, you know, the, the city has the right to refuse a piece of land, and we, we do too, all, all the time. Small piece of property, it's landlocked, somebody's tired of paying property tax on, and it's no conservation value. So we say, you know, "I'll review it with the board, but, and I'm not optimistic." And, and virtually all of those, we, we refuse the donation. So all, all we're talking about, all this legislation covers is a percentage of cases, and, you know, over the last 15 years, it's been one out of five, one, one out of three, five case out of 15 years, where the land trust owes some taxes from the date of closing for the next fiscal year, or...
Yeah, this is a very, just, this is a very, very narrow case, all right? This is a case where a conservation organization, that's narrow number one, okay, closes on a donation or purchase of a piece of land. The previous owner, who was obliged to pay taxes, didn't, and it wasn't or corrected at closing. Okay, so the land trust ends up with a tax bill somehow. The previous period is, is owed by somebody. Their nonprofit, the legislature said, "To correct that very tiny sliver of a chance that something like that would happen, we're going to let them get off the hook." Okay? You could always go after the seller, either, either the land trust can, or the city can, whoever, you know, can go after the previous owner to get the taxes. But so that they don't have to pay what was not adjusted at closing, the common counsel can authorize that remedy. Okay, that's, that's, it's very narrow. It only applies to these organizations, and only in very rare cases where there's a mistake of some kind.
And, and it never, ever applies to taxes before the date of closing. It, it only applies to those, those few cases where, from the date of closing, when we now own the property, a, for some period forward, there are some taxes due, and it was not resolved with the attorneys, and therefore, we end up holding the bag for those taxes, even though, for a period of time, even though we're not a tax exempt.
I just want to correct that, it could apply for a period before the acquisition. That's what the legislation says. But that doesn't matter. It's not, the issue is that the land trust is stuck with the taxes. If it had owned the property before the date of acquisition, it would not have been responsible for those taxes. That's the bottom line. And now you want to go back, and if the counsel agrees with that, forgive that, that obligation on their part.
What, what about if we did it just from this point on, establish that, from the point of the, the closing of the, of the, to give the property, then there will be no taxes for, for the land?
It's not what the legislation says, that's the problem with that. You, you, then you would be adopting something other than what the legislation says you could do. You have to, you have to mirror the legislative language, the statute, the public act language, in order to be able to do this. You couldn't change what they're, their intention is before acquisition. That's when the taxes would be due.
Through the Chair. Mr. Montgomery, the, perk me if I'm wrong, what you're looking for, once you, once the property is transferred, that you no longer have an obligation for taxes, right?
After the date of closing.
After the date of closing. Because normally, you would until the next, in, until the year basically expires, and then you're recognized as a tax exempt.
Exactly.
And it's not for profit.
Yeah.
So, whatever that period might be. Now, now what happens at closing is that the bill is prorated, right? And the seller asks of you to pay for whatever that prorated piece of the annual bill is, correct? On that property.
In, in, in most cases, and, and this is the way it works ideally, the, the attorneys work out that, number one, the donor or seller pays everything up to the date of closing, and whatever...
Because that's their obligation.
Is due, whatever will be due after the date of closing, will be paid by the donor or seller. In fact, our attorney always tries, goes to the assessor's office and tries to find out what that...
Yeah.
...number is, you know, let's say, over the, over, you know, over the next 10 months, or whatever it is, what the taxes are, so he can have the attorney at closing agree that the donor or seller will, will pay them. And, you know, again, there are times when that works and doesn't work. The, I think the five cases that I mentioned, I think either our attorney or, or I have appealed all of them, and, and won none of them, so, so this, you know, this legislation could be helpful.
I don't know if it helps, Dave, but the example that you and I talked about before might be the simplest illustration. Let's say that Bill's organization was donating a piece of property on January 1st, okay, of '09. The tax assessment year of October 1, 2007 applies, okay?
Yep.
Starts in July of '08. So for the two quarters, July and October of '08, the prior owner is responsible, and at the closing, they pay, supposed to pay those taxes, okay? For the period of January, for the quarter of January and April, you would be responsible for those taxes, because you'd be owning the property at that time. And there'd be an adjustment at closing for that. So, but let's say the donator to you didn't pay the July and September period of time, right? They're obliged. You end up paying that amount at the closing somehow. The legislation is intended to make them whole, so that that person who donated it, it was a screw-up, they should have paid, they didn't, he pays, you guys help him out for those two quarters. That's the simplest illustration. So on January 1st, there was a mistake made at the closing, Bill end up paying those taxes, shouldn't have. The counsel can help them out, and then all is forgiven. Okay? I hope that, that's kind of the, you know, the way I looked at it.
But if there's, I have a question. If there's a, a screw-up at closing, shouldn't I just, shouldn't we try to resolve that with the attorneys at the time, instead of having them come to the city?
And I, and I told Bill that, I had sent him a note about that. I said, I, you know, "Look, at closings, yes, they're supposed to adjust, okay? Nobody's supposed to be on the hook after, it's supposed to be done properly at the time." But this, this legislation is out there, was adopted by the legislature, for whatever purpose it was adopted, to say, "Okay, normally, you know, it's your problem." Okay? But they're saying that they're giving the legislative bodies an option. If you want to overlook that screw-up, here's how you can do it. By authorizing, by resolution, if you go case by case, basically forgiveness. But what you're really doing is, you're really forgiving the previous taxpayer.
There you go.
But since they paid, you're kind of forgiving them as well, the organization, okay? But that's what you're doing.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying. We have, we have never, ever paid taxes prior to the date of closing.
Yeah.
The, the only issue are these...
Why would you?
Well, I, I...
No, I'm saying, why, sarcastically, why you wouldn't, you know, pay the taxes.
And, and, you know, again, we would never, never, you know, we, we got offered a very nice piece of property here a couple years ago, and the owner was upfront, right, right off the bat, said, you know, "We owe a lot of taxes, and, and some of, some of them are leaves held by ATF, some of them are still owned to the city, and, boy, we're not gonna take that on."
Just, I, I wasn't sure if I caught your dates correct, and I, Les, but using that example, the, the property transferred on June of '09, or January of '09. His is for, for a tax assessor standpoint, it would not be recognized as a tax-exempt entity until October of '09.
Unless, if she, if she goes with the ordinance, though...
Oh, right.
That's a provision that you can recognize at January 1st.
Right. As soon as the, the transfer is satisfied.
Yeah. Yeah. So we're talking about the two quarters before, which is the question of forgiveness. That's what we're talking about. Or whatever, whatever the amount of time was, I'm just, my example is two quarters, it could be one quarter, quarter and a half, whatever the delinquency is for that period before January 1st. That's what you're being asked, that you can forgive if you want to. That's what this boils down to.
We have any other discussions?
Yeah, through the Chair, Les. This is, beginning to drift in the complexities, I, I can't even start to take apart. To begin with, I'm not sure what Mr. Montgomery's tax liabilities are on property that he acquiesced to the land trust. Is it zero? Is it, does he pay no taxes on land to begin with? Is it a small amount? Is it like a farm tax? I, I, I don't know what his, as, as his land trust empire grows and grows, is his tax liability going up, or is he supposed to place no taxes at all? Number one. Number two, we seem to be talking about two different things. One, it's refunding taxes that are essentially owned by the previous owner. And also, you just mentioned something about the enabling legislation that allows the assessor to stop the tax at the transfer, which apparently we're not doing now, but, but according to Mr. St. Hauer, the, the, the tax year ends in October. So if there's a transfer at any point before that, you're still on the hook for taxes until October. I don't happen to agree with that kind of setup. I think there should be some more flexibility in, in, in the system. It's almost like buying a, a car from somebody, and then smashing it up, and he's still on the hook for the next calendar year, because, according to some weird federal law, he owns it until the, you know, the cal, the fiscal year flips over.
There's a lot more flexibility in that.
Right. I'm just saying, I would not be opposed to telling not just the land trust, but anybody that your, your taxes begin, or if you're a 501(c)(3), or you don't pay tax at all, whatever, that, that the status of the tax changes at transfer, that, that just seems like common sense to me.
If I may?
Yeah.
It, it does, normally, but what we're talking about is, is going from a taxable to a tax exempt. And, you know, normally, what would happen, let's say the, you know, a simple transfer from one person to another, you know, those changes occur all the time.
True.
And that occurs at closing, they prorate the tax and do all that. Even property splits and things like that, they occur. But this is, is something different, and that's probably, you know, why something like this was, I don't know, crafted to, to deal with these unique situations that infrequently occur, but do occur, but...
Well, my, my question is still, are, are, what are we doing? Are we offering a refund for a tax that needed to be paid by a previous owner? Or are we changing the status and taxability at the time of transfer? Those, those are two different philosophical ideas, and which one of those two things are we doing? If I... One is, gee, it's too bad that, you know, he's got to pay the tax for the next six months, they couldn't work it out at the closing, somebody screwed up, so we'll give him a couple hundred bucks, and he'll be on his way. The other is, from now on, no matter what happens at closing, his tax liability ends at closing. Is that what we're doing? Are we doing one, both, or a little bit of each, or...
Well, I mean, I, I think they, they can be handled separately.
But what is, what is this, excuse me, what does the state legislation say? That's what I'm, I'm asking.
It, it, it says the first one.
Which is?
Says the first one, which is, "At the date of transaction, the tax liability stops for them, for, for the exempt organization." That the previous taxpayer is obligated, it stops on the date of acquisition. That's what that says.
You also mentioned that we, and I'm, I'm assuming you're using the royal we, if I may, the city can go back after the previous owner and collect those taxes that were owed, which suggests to me that the status didn't change.
Well, the ta, the tax, the tax, that's right. The tax status of, of the previous owner did not change.
That's what I needed, okay. All right. So here's my comment, if I may. Putting aside the minuscule amounts of this money, I mean, and they may be a lot for Mr. Montgomery or any nonprofit, it's tax-exempt land trust or anything like that, and I'm not, I'm not implying that they're, they don't have some sort of cost to the organization, but for a city with a $200 million budget, a couple of hundred bucks every couple of years, it's, I mean, it's rounding it, you know, it's not even, it would cost us more to create the ordinance than it would probably save Mr. Montgomery. However, the fact that remains is that... However, the fact that remains is that these are taxes that are legitimately owed by the previous property owner that are somehow, for whatever reason, not satisfied at transfer. And if they're not satisfied at transfer, it means that the community as a whole then has to satisfy that tax bill if we are going to refund their, their funds. And again, putting aside the amounts, just the concept alone, and I, I, I have a commercial piece of property, I owe taxes on it and will continue to owe taxes until I sell it. And for some reason, I transferred it to a church or bequeathed it or something like that, and they're, they unfortunately will be on the hook for the next eight or nine bucks if we change the date. So it's not 200 bucks, it's 18,000 bucks, and the city pays it because they've got this thing and they want to encourage, you know, acquisitions and bequeathments and open space. That may be good for the person receiving the transfer, it's not so hot for the community at large because they, they've got to chip in on this. I, I am against this kind of thing unless there is no other way out. If, if by some bizarre statute, they had to be on the hook for that tax and they had, there was absolutely no way around, that would be a different story. But it sounds to me like they have enough control at the, at the moment of transfer and closing to avoid this. May not be easy, it may be complicated and it might even screw up a transfer, but the receiver has some control over this process. They can say, look, guys, here's the thing, we can't afford the 200 or 300 bucks, we don't know exactly what it's going to be, but we'll send somebody down to City Hall, figure out what the liability is going to be until October and let's satisfy that at closing. And they can do that. I would be much more comfortable simply taking it on a case by case basis instead of creating an ordinance. Bill comes into the tax office, says, well, we screwed up again, or so, I don't mean Bill did, but somehow something happened and it, it costs us 300 bucks, is there a way that you can, when the grant agencies come up with the next budget, can you write in a, a little line item for 300 dollars for us? I, I would, I would be more comfortable recommending that to the council than creating a, an ordinance where we automatically refund regardless. So I, I want a little, I guess what I'm saying is I want to put, keep a little pressure on the parties to, to dot the i's and cross the t's before they do the transfer. Because again, it's not the city that's, that's refunding this, it's the people. And I'm, I'm not sure that, that they, they sent me to Deer Hill to do that. I, I know that they, one of the big deals in Danbury is overdevelopment and people do want open space and we need to encourage that. And I'm, I'm trying to satisfy both things. The land trust gets its money, the taxpayers are still satisfied, we keep a little balance in the process, so that's where I'm coming from.
Any other discussions?
By the way, I don't know if we, if we can even do that, so I'm glad you're here, maybe we can, maybe we can't. Mr. Montgomery read some part of the legislation where he didn't think he could actually get a refund outside of this process and I, I don't, I don't know if that's the case or not.
Well, the closing is done, through the chair, sorry, the closing is finished, so I don't think there's any way, I mean, there's always a remedy, I guess Peter Hunt, Peter Hunt, who's their attorney, can I suppose, go back and try to make a claim. But, you know, it seems to me, reading this, it's a very short piece of legislation, seems to me this legislation was very targeted for just the situation where there's a mistake of some kind, Paul, in the committee, is a mistake, and recognizing the mistake and almost not caring about the mistake, forgiveness is in order if the body feels that forgiveness is in order. That's the way I take it, kind of simply looking at what they intended to do because it's so narrow, okay? The next time you'll see this is 25 years from now, probably, okay? It's so narrow.
But if I may, it could happen at every transfer. There's no more pressure on the seller or the bequeater to clean up this tax liability before they do this because they know that no matter what Montgomery has to pay, it's going to get forgiven by the city. And, and that's not the kind of message that I want to send.
Or the receiver, for that matter.
Exactly, that's, I, I just don't want to send that. I don't want to say that, that it's automatic, that there's nothing that the city can do once we grant this enabling legislation. It's, it's made a complete, I, I would rather see it done by case basis.
And, and to the chair, I'm not suggesting that you adopt it or don't. All I'm saying is that it sounds like this statutory intent was simply to allow this case by case. And the next case, maybe if Bill comes in next year and says, we screwed up again, you might very rightfully say, I can't do it again, were you nuts? You know, so that's what you're allowed to do.
Oh, are you, are you saying that by writing this ordinance, we will be able to do it on a case by case basis?
You can do it on a case by case basis without an ordinance. If you adopt an ordinance, as I was suggesting to Phil before, by adopting it, you're probably going a little deeper in which you set, you've established that you're willing to consider these on a fairly regular basis. If it's a case by case, when Bill comes in next year, are you kidding? We don't have any ordinance that says we have to even deal with you, so forget it.
Just.
You know what I'm saying?
One point through the, through the chair, I mean, for advertising purposes, just a point, we have to advertise ordinance, right?
Yes, publish, yes.
And, and just case by case basis, we don't, right?
You just noticed the meeting?
That's it.
This meeting, that's probably the only published.
And the cost of an ordinance, I can tell you, will, will, sure will. You know, you're going to pay, you're going to pay several hundred dollars, so.
That's what he's to finance for.
Right, and, and you pay $90,000 a year for, for publications and notices and all that kind of stuff, and we're trying to get that down. So if you're interested in a case by case basis on this very infrequent event, or if you're interested in doing something, do a case by case basis, it's probably better than simply doing an ordinance.
If, if I may, I, I would like to see some sort of, perhaps a more formal, formal partnership between the land trust and the city whereby every year we examine issues that they may have and we cut them a check through grant agencies, you know, for 200 or 300 dollars if we, if we have to.
Through the chair, yeah, I'm not here to promote the land trust, but the land trust does associate coordinate work with the city in many different ways, there are probably, so that's kind of out there, but I'm not, that's not why I mention it. Yeah, there, there is a collaboration that comes on regularly and probably that's why this ordinance was, this legislature was enacted, recognizing that these groups are routinely working with municipalities, so maybe there, there should be consideration given. I think that's why this was enacted in the first place. Because they didn't do it for Phil Curran or, or Paul Retell or anybody else, they did it for these organizations that they know, I guess, are working together all, all the time. So, so for example, the council does this, they, they grant a forgiveness, it's within the context of this overall plan of associate, association where people work together, you know, the land trust helps the city, city helps the land trust, everybody's happy, that kind of thing.
May I ask a clarification question of Les? Are, are you interpreting this legislation to cover only taxes prior to the date of closing? Which I think everybody in the world would agree is, is the responsibility of the, the prior owner. And, and it, it does not affect taxes after the date of closing, which, which is the only situation we've ever got in and, and the reason we got in it, or, or get in it is because the way the grand list is set up, as you gave in your example, and somehow the parties don't, don't agree that the donor or seller is, is going to be responsible for all this. I, I mean, the church example is the best example I have.
Yeah, the, the way I'm interpreting is that, that the land trust pays taxes after the acquisition that were due before the acquisition. That's the way I'm reading it. Because that's what the statu, the or, the statute says. It says that taxes that were payable due to the city prior to the date of acquisition, but which the nonprofit entity paid afterwards through whatever, for whatever reason, okay? Could have been, again, a closing error, could have been a subsequent payment for some other reason. So I'm reading, yes, that the date of acquisition, the taxes that were due prior to the date of acquisition that were paid erroneously afterwards. And afterwards could be at the closing or a moment after or a month after.
And, and it does not apply to taxes paid due, due after the closing?
Right.
That's the way you understand it?
That's the way, that's the way I read it, it's right there. That's the way the, the language was crafted. It says specifically, any tax paid but paid by a nonprofit land conservation organization that were due for a period before the date of acquisition, but which were paid subsequent to the date of acquisition. That's exactly what it says. And that's the way I, you know, when you can get to read a piece of legislation with plain language, that's the way I read it. And that's what it says.
Pretty clear.
I don't want to put words in Bill's mouth, but he seems to be saying that he's, he owes taxes from a period after the closing.
That's a prorated amount that you're talking about.
Right. Not taxes that were due, again, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but you seem to be saying that you've cleared everything, you, first of all, you don't even accept property with taxes or owe. So let's just stipulate that I'm, I'm receiving this piece of property and all the back taxes have been paid. After I receive it, however, I keep, I get a couple of more bills moving forward. That's correct, they're not much, a couple of hundred bucks, but you seem to be saying that there are continuing taxes after the transfer day. I don't happen to feel that that's fair, by the way, but if that's the way we're all operating, that's the way we're all operating. It sounds to me like this legislation would not address that.
Yeah, yeah.
It sounds to me like we could pass this and it would take pressure off a potential acquisition. If there was some concern about back taxes, you wouldn't really have to kill yourself over that and if it turned out they owed a few thousand bucks, God forbid, they would be protected, but it wouldn't, but they, it sounds like they, they're really doing their homework well on that and that's not the issue. The issue is the moving forward and it seems to me that this legislation is not going to satisfy that issue. And if it doesn't, I'm backed to the case by case where I would be very happy simply having Bill walk into the office and say, look, I had to pay a couple of hundred bucks. Well, okay, in a budget time, we'll give you a check.
Well, that's true. That's, that's another solution.
Takes care of the problem.
Yep, yep.
We don't have to publish a thing in the, in the newspaper and spend 90,000 bucks on our fancy, you know, lambskin books in the town clerk's office.
The, the confusion, I think, comes in is that we do bill in arrears for, for taxes. But, and, and I don't think this clarifies that at all.
Yeah, it's, yeah, no, I know what you mean, yeah.
So, however, an example provided here doesn't necessarily clarify that, you know?
And that's why we're left with what our most reasonable.
So we're left to this.
Plain meaning interpretation is. And that's simply that, if the cutoff date is the date of acquisition, whatever taxes were due through that date, that calendar date is what is adjusted. That's the only way, you know? There, there's a body of law out there, by the way, on this issue, okay? There's, there's a bunch of cases. But this legislation locks it in, in my opinion, there's no way around it, that's what it says. And I, I don't want to, I mean, you can read into it, we can do some more research and maybe we'll find nuances and everything, but that's what it says. It's, it's very, it's a very short, simple thing, so I, I don't know if there's any reason to beat it up too much because it is what it says. They bought the land January first, if they paid the taxes for previous to January first, whatever was due to that day, you can forgive. That's, you know.
Which is not the problem, it's the taxes that are due after that day.
No, see, according to this, it's taxes that he paid for the period before the date, that's what I read that to be. So if, if there were taxes due after the date, it doesn't address that, in my opinion.
But Paul, Paul's right, that.
But that's, that's his issue. I think, I think if we pass this, he's going to be in worse shape. Because now we'll be locked into an ordinance where, where we have almost codified a, a, a date of convergence at the transfer and Bill's going to come in and say, hey, 300 bucks for the following six months, we can't help it.
But see, the beauty of a case by case basis, you can do whatever forgiveness you want.
That's what I'm saying.
That's what you're saying, I know that's what you're saying. And that's why the case by case maybe works better because you can cut that decision the way you want.
Well, it works better for me, but I'm, you know, I can't speak for the ad hoc and I can't speak for Mr. Montgomery, but I, I am more comfortable, because Mr. Montgomery's a responsible guy, he's been in Danbury since they used to call it the Swanfield Land Trust, his properties all over town and I wish him good luck and he's an integral part of this new mayor's initiative for open space and we know we're going to be working with him for a long time and we want to keep him happy and encourage him. For my money, not to make a pun, going case by case is, is a much better one. I'll make a motion that for this one case now, that we reimburse the, the, the land trust for the money, to, what is it, how much?
I, I appreciate that, I'm, I'm not sure there's a case that, that qualifies under Les's definition. First of all, this law doesn't even go into effect until the grand list of October 1st, 2007. That's payments starting.
July of oh eight.
July of oh eight. Okay, we, we have.
Then I'll re, I'll take it back and I'll just do it in the future, in the future of this same situation.
I have a, I have a solution.
That is not a case by case basis.
Have in your motion that the, that the taxes due are as determined by the tax assessor for the period up until the acquisition. That way the assessor will correctly be able to determine what tax was due, whether it was those two quarters, three quarters, one quarter, whatever it is. That way you're covered because the assessor will know how to make that adjustment. Is that, on, on this case?
I would also just, you know, add, and we can bring this up in the full council meeting to, to, to encourage Mr. Montgomery and also the grant agencies to, to meet on a yearly basis and discuss any outstanding debts that, that the land trust made. Because it, it, these, we're, we're used to giving 20, 30, 90,000 dollars. It would be a, a pleasure to have someone come in that wants 116 bucks, you know, and that would be, I'm just saying, right?
May I raise one more question with Les, please? The, the one case that is a property that, that was donated on July 28th of, of 2007 and the owner paid, not only had paid everything up to that point, but paid everything up to June 30th of, of 2008. But then we, we were stuck starting July 1st, 2008 through the, the fourth payment, which is due April 1st of, of this year. And, and you're saying the legislation doesn't, doesn't address that.
That's what I'm saying, but, but that's why I suggested the motion to the council, which allows the assessor to see, and I think, David, you may think this is good too, the assessor will be able, as the assessor, and, and she's not here, she got noticed, but, or she was, she's away.
It's la hude.
And again, I, just as a committee, if you want to have another meeting to have her here and then go through this a little more, you can do that. But what I'm suggesting is if you put that in your motion, it may very well turn out to be the way Bill suggests if the, if Colleen says the tax due on January 1st is actually more than those two quarters. I don't think the, the statute intends that, but it's possible the assessor could view it that way, which covers the concern that Bill is actually out some more money than, than otherwise would be. That's why if you make your motion that way, the assessor will have that, be able to make that call. And then they'll get whatever refund or abatement, the full abatement that they might be entitled to. I'm just suggesting as a solution because, you know, the tax due, the assessor will make that call, okay? The assessor will make that call, she'll probably come up to see me and says, what do I do? I'll, I'll tell her my opinion and she'll say, well, here's what was due on January 1st, okay? We'll have that discussion. And then you'll have the assessor, the protection of the assessor's review of what was due on that day. I think this is what it is. It says.
Seems pretty clear to me.
That's, you know.
It ends at transfer. Meanwhile, he's still on the hook for months and months and months, potentially.
Well, but, you know, you get some, you get something. You don't get the whole thing, get something.
It, it does get adjusted on the next grand list. So, you know, in the case you, you mentioned, a conveyance in, in January, the next grand list, the, the taxes for the, the subsequent year are, are adjusted based on the, the percentage of the year that that January conveyance represented.
See, in Connecticut, one of the problems is you have an assessment in October, you have a tax payment due July and, you know, so it's, it's sometimes it's difficult to grapple with these overlapping dates.
It took me a long time to understand.
Because that's why you're, you're billed, you know, after the fact, you know?
It's like the phone company, they bill you for a minute when you only use a couple of seconds. I mean, it's one of those deals where you're in for a penny, you're in for a pound, you're just, you're on the hook for the whole thing.
Our, I mean, our assessment date is October 1st, 2008, but our July bills, or, you know, the, our taxable year is July 1st, 2009, using tax roll of October 1st, 2008. That's all what properties were valued at that time. So, so it's not going forward, it's actually going back. And that's why you're in that pickle.
Any other discussion? I'm winding down here. Can I ask for a motion?
I'll make Les's motion, you want to read your one?
David's one?
No, well, your word is, is your word. No, well, your word is, is your word.
Well, this for adoption of the resolution to case for this case?
Case by case, yeah.
If I may, this is not gonna be an ordinance. This is just instructions in passing of a statute.
Right, so if I understand the desire of the committee, right, so you'd be recommending to the council the adoption of a resolution abating that portion of the property taxes for the land trust of Danbury for the period in question in accordance with the statute. Okay?
At the discretion of.
And the language about the assessor, as determined by the assessor, as determined by the assessor.
There'll likely be an application for him, so it's exemption.
Any other discussion?
But you made that, or somebody made it. I didn't make it. It's a suggested language.
You got that?
Any other discussion?
I think, I think it works. I mean, if I may, I think that it answers, it satisfies the petitioner and it satisfies the city.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Joseph Fosse, anybody?
Paul, this is longer than the transition.
Yeah, it was. Did you just say, look, it was longer than the house? We have a second on the German?
Oh, German.
The vote?
Aye.
I don't know if this will. The common council ad hoc committee meeting went Wednesday, February fourth, two thousand ninety, held in the office room on the third floor at City Hall here in Danbury. Present are Councilwoman Mary Tysholz, Councilman Paul Rotello, Corporation Counsel Les Pinner, Director of Finance David St. Hilaire, Director of Planning Dennis Elpern, Airport Administrator Paul Estefan, and from the city myself, Jack Nap, Councilman, Chair of the Committee. We also have with us willing Bill from the, as the petitioner, petitioner's here. We, most of us here have your packets from the previous, has the minutes from the previous meetings. There's several pieces of information here that I ran into the minutes of the last meeting. I'm not gonna do that again. But what I will do for the sake of Mr. Bill, if nothing else, is to just run through our report from the last meeting, which was held on September seventeenth. Let me just read this in. Chairman Knapp called the meeting to order at seven twenty. The attendance were Committee Member Councilwoman Tysholz, Les Lopinner, Deputy Corporation Counsel David St. Hilaire, Director of Finance Paul Estefan, Airport Administrator. Oh, Director of Finance Paul Estefan, you got a problem?
I don't think you're.
I'm reading wrong.
On corporate counsel.
David St. David? Les?
I could do worse. You've got my job, Paul.
Les Lopinner, Deputy.
That's official, because this is an ad hoc.
David St. Hilaire, Director of Finance.
At the time of the year, he could have.
Paul Estefan, Airport Administrator.
Thank you.
Dennis Elpern, Director of Planning, Councilman Cabo Exoficio, and members of the public. Committee Member Councilman Rotello was absent. It was noted that the petitioner, Erstad Biddle, was not present. Chairman Knapp stated that the call of the meeting was to discuss the renewal of the parking leases at Twenty Back Avenue. Lots of L one seven zero one one dash one and L one seven zero one one dash two. The leases have expired, and the petitioner is requesting a rent schedule that is significantly less than the rate paid previously. Attorney Pinter gave historical background information regarding the property leases. Erstad Biddle is seeking to renewal of the leases for twenty years with five, ten-year options. With a schedule substantially less than they have been paying. Currently, the leases have expired, but the petitioner has been paying the rent. Discussion followed regarding illegal action resulting, should a delinquency occur, the positive recommendations of the planning commission, the horseshoe field and insurance issues. The planning director advised that over time, the use has changed and the petitioner would have insufficient parking spaces if the leases were not renewed. If the city does not renew the leases, they will be nonconforming. They will become nonconforming.
Right.
If the petitioner does not renew the leases, they will be noncompliant, resulting in legal issues. The airport administrator stated that the rent is part of the airport income. Mr. Estefan referred to a letter dated November thirteenth, two thousand, from Attorney Pinter to Attorney Robin Kahn regarding the two parking areas. Information was also provided regarding the horseshoe field located adjacent to the property. The only access to the horseshoe field, which is airport property, is through the leased property. Director St. Hilaire advised that the horseshoe field provides a benefit to the businesses and should be taken into consideration. Attorney Pinter recommended that an appraisal be conducted for the properties, which should include a component for the taxes. Mr. Estefan advised that he would not support any lease proposal beyond five years with an option for five years. Councilwoman Tysholz moved to commence an appraisal containing a component for taxes through the Office of Corporation Counsel to continue the meeting and to continue the meeting until the information is received. Seconded by Councilman Knapp, motion passed unanimous vote. Councilwoman Tysholz moved to adjourn at seven thirty one P M., seconded by Councilman Knapp. Motion passed the way of Anderson. So that's where we're at. That was our last meeting. That was the discussions that we had at our last meeting. We have in front of us, was there anything in there, Mr. Elpern, that I need to?
Well, yeah, I, it's not that he becomes nonconforming. He becomes noncompliant. Assuming that all of his buildings are filled. I know we have vacancy now at Boston. But it's not nonconforming. He needs, of all the spaces that he's leasing, he needs a minimum of twenty-three to meet the requirements, the zoning requirements for parking. So he needs that. Doesn't need the whole thing, but he needs that much.
Right. Okay, I missed the last meeting. I was never noticed. The post office didn't deliver the letter, so I need to come up to speed on this. How many, he needs twenty-three. How many is he leasing, if I may?
He's leasing seventy-five.
Okay. Through the chair, what is he paying at present? That was, I don't have those figures. David, do you have that? And what does he propose to pay?
I can help you with that, Chair. For the side parcel, the last rental, annual rental was a little over ninety-eight hundred dollars, annual rental. The rear parcel, again, annual, is just under fifty-five hundred dollars.
And that's the total, those two?
Yes.
So ninety-eight hundred, not ninety-eight thousand, right?
Right.
So we're looking at approximately fifteen thousand, sixteen thousand. For the two parcels of seventy-five, and he only needs a third of that. He can get away with a third of that, but he's leasing from us two parcels for approximately fifteen thousand per year. Now, through the chair, again, the other part of the question was, what is he proposing?
According to correspondence to the mayor in July, for the rear area, three thousand dollars annual, and a ten percent increase every five years.
Okay.
And then for the side area, five thousand annual with a ten percent increase every five years.
Is there a reason that he feels that the property's dropped in value by fifty percent or something, or forty percent?
Well, that's what's before, you know, that's the, that was the proposal.
Okay. Is he offering anything else in lieu of money? He's gonna pay less but do something more?
This is just, this is just a correspondence. I'm not aware of any other.
Okay, man, I don't mean to be talking around. This is a little intense discussion. He's just offering to pay less?
Yes.
Okay, that's, I'm up to speed. And if you bring us up to speed also as to why we went through the appraisal process?
Of course, at the last meeting, committee meeting, Mr. Chairman, the Councilwoman Tysholz suggested move to have an appraisal done so that the committee could get an idea of what the fair market value of these leases would be. That request was made. That's what we did. And we announced, like, firm, conduct the appraisal.
If I may, does anybody have a calculator? I know I've got one on my computer. I'm gonna boot it up, but.
I've got one.
David, do you have one?
Okay.
Councilwoman Tysholz, do you have any questions?
Well, we were just handed all this, like, right. So we can start now and just reading this. So does someone just point out where the bottom line is on this appraisal for me, please?
Look about maybe five pages in. At the bottom of that page, it's.
Yeah, there's not a page number, but.
Oh, these two, break it, okay.
Well, yeah, there's different approaches.
I can use the one page, but before that. If you just give us a second to review this, please. There's two parcels there. Okay. So for clarification, we have the, we have in front of us the appraisal. On the appraisal, the page is our number, but it was one page before with the thing, I think it's about the fourth page. It shows exactly what the dollar figures are, Paul, that we're dealing with now, and. Okay, what, I'm sorry, Chairman, what page is that?
Probably like the fourth or fifth page, you'll see it.
This here?
No, no.
That?
Oh, just before that, one before that. See, skip it.
Got it.
Right.
Yeah.
That, on that page, it illustrates exactly what they're paying now, which is basically ninety-eight sixty-three and sixty-three eighty-four, okay? For a total of approximately sixteen one.
Oh, not fifty-five hundred, though, so it's a little bit more.
Right.
What are those new figures?
They're on that page, but it's ninety-eight sixty-three and sixty-three eighty-four.
I see the ninety-eight. Where's the sixty-three?
The bottom line is that it's about a fifty percent reduction is what the tenant is looking for in.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. This is a renewal option. I think this is what you're looking for right here.
That's what they're paying now.
Yeah. See, this is just a renewal option.
I got you. I got you. Okay.
Okay.
I see you.
I just wanted to make sure that.
So we're at.
We're back to the original figures, ninety-eight to the five?
Let's do, let's start this from the beginning.
Okay.
Here's where we're at right now. We're at eighty-eight oh six, okay, and we're at. Fifty-nine twenty-eight.
Eleven through fifteen.
Is that correct?
No, we're at the ninety-eight sixty-three, right?
We've got to be, we've got to be.
We're at year fifteen.
Mr. Pinter, could you clarify for us where we're at?
Right, you've got to be year fifteen or close to.
Ninety-eight sixty-three.
Ninety-eight, right, ninety-eight sixty-three for the side parcel, annual rent, and fifty-four seventy-two for the rear parcel.
Which is kind of odd because it should be, it should be higher.
That's why.
The rear parcel should be higher unless it was executed later than.
It must have been.
We have.
It was, it was later.
It was later. All right, it wasn't the day of nine, four one.
So those original numbers, the original numbers are correct.
I think we looked at that, I'm sorry. It was like ninety-eight or something like that. So it would be going up this year.
So the bottom line is, is that we're looking at sixteen, fifteen thousand three hundred, and we're looking at a proposal now that's on the table for eight thousand dollars. We're looking to take a seven thousand three hundred dollar reduction if we agree to what has been presented to us by the petitioner, which was sent to the mayor back in July.
If I may.
So July fifteenth.
Mr. Radhak. I happen to rent parking spaces. I get fifty bucks for my parking spaces per month. Just doing some very quick back of the envelope calculating, Mr. Biddle is at present paying seventeen dollars a month for his parking spaces. And under his proposal, will be paying eight dollars and eighty-eight cents per month for his parking spaces. So just keep that, we all have a pretty good idea of what, you know, it costs to do parking spaces. We just built some on Bank Street a couple of years ago. We had to tear down a house and do that. We, I mean, the city had to do that to increase parking for the library. Antonia was telling, Buckley was telling me, I think that the project is two or three hundred thousand. And it worked out to about twenty-two thousand for a parking space, which is about right. That's about right. And when you divide that over a ten-year period, you come up with about twenty-two hundred bucks a parking space, approximately one seventy-five a month. So if you're gonna get in the parking space business, there's a floor to this. I would not, I don't want to go on a limb here, but I would not even be comfortable with seventeen dollars a month if they were my parking spaces. I would have to answer to my board, and they would look at me and be, oh, you're mine. You want to rent our parks for seventeen dollars, and that's where we are now. And the right direction to me would be like thirty-five dollars a month for parking spaces. The wrong direction would be eight dollars and eighty-eight cents. So that's just, sometimes it's easier to figure out, just take a parking space and look at it that way. And these are the figures, seventeen now, eighty-eighty, eight-eighty, proposed per space per month. It seems, it seems that he's getting a deal now. Okay. Now, whether you can afford it or not, and it works in this, that's another issue. And whether we have a market for those spaces down there is another issue. If we were gonna get into the parking rental space business, which we're probably not gonna do, I'm simply saying. Eighty-eighty seems to be phenomenally low for a parking space, but that's my opinion.
Okay, yeah, I do, I'm sorry, through the chair to, I think, Corporation Counsel or Finance, I'm not sure. Okay, on this page, we're looking at what is currently being paid. The ninety-eight sixty-three or the fifty-four seventy-two, correct?
Mm-hmm.
But what, what was the appraisal amount? That's what I'm trying to find out.
The sixteen, let's match them up. Let's check the size.
That's what I'm trying to figure out.
It's these here?
These are all kind of.
Yeah, it's, well, I just want to match it up, make sure we got the right square footage, make sure there's no mistake.
The one that's at fifty-four seventy-two is that would be appraised at twenty thousand dollars a year for parking.
That's the rear.
That's the rear.
Right.
And the one that is currently at ninety-eight sixty-three is appraised at thirty-two eight per year.
Thank you.
And I know if you want to divide that and see how that works out in your calculations.
What were those numbers?
Thirty, thirty-two eight, and that's for the front line.
Well, they're right on the next page.
Right on the bottom.
No.
Turn the page.
Thirty-two thousand eight hundred?
Yeah.
Two dollars a square foot annually, two dollars a square foot annually, so we're looking at. So the total's fifty-two thousand eight hundred?
Yeah.
And what did you want me to divide that by?
The number of parking spots. We got seventy-five.
Yeah. Seven oh four per year. Fifty-eight sixty-six.
There you go.
Okay, so now we pretty much see where the value of that land is, the value of those parking places are. Mr. Biddle, I'd just like to throw it out to you. How are we gonna entertain going down fifty percent when our appraisal's showing that it's worth probably three times what you're currently paying?
Well, this appraisal and maybe your, your own personal experiences renting parking spaces does assume that there's a demand for these parking spaces. I'm in a position where the majority of these spaces are never used. We don't need them. We're maintaining the lot, we're cleaning the lot, and we don't need them. So my offer that I proposed, I had basically tried to figure out how many of the spaces, A, do we need? And B, do we use? And then tried to give the city an increase, but based upon the amount of spaces that we're using. We're not here to try to take advantage of the city or anything like that. The, it's true, you can, parking spaces can rent for fifty dollars, they can rent for a hundred dollars if it's near a train station or an office building or something where you need the parking spaces. But I don't know if you all have ever been over that property and seen the back where these spaces are, but they're not, they're not used. And we have a situation now where we don't have a tenant, Boston Billiards. If it goes to retail versus the assembly type of use that's there, it may, I don't know if I'll even need the side lot. I believe I will need the twenty-three spaces, but certainly not all of that side. I believe I will need the, the twenty-three spaces, but certainly not all of that side lot. So that's where, that's how we came up with our offer. I don't, I don't know if these comparables, having just seen this appraisal, really take into account usability or need of parking versus no need for parking. You know, I can appraise a parking spot in the middle of Danbury for one thing, but a parking spot in, in the middle of farmland in Iowa where no one's gonna walk to it, there's an old expression in real estate, you know, if you can't rent it, it's not worth anything. So that's where we were coming from here.
Without, and I know Paul's got the map.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Why did you just ask to stop leasing the lot in the rear?
Um, why did we ask not to?
Yeah, just stop leasing the, the portion in the rear.
That could certainly be an option.
Without changing the fees for space, whatever it might be, and retain this, this, the spaces along the side, which will give you at least the twenty-three and the cushion, depending on what your new tenant's gonna be, 'cause I can't tell you how many spaces would be required. I think it was calculated at retail for Boston. But if you put a restaurant in or something, well, you have to have a mighty large restaurant, 'cause the requirement is one per four seats plus employees.
Yeah.
And if you've got forty-five spaces, then it's a big restaurant. And deal with it that way.
If I may, make one other comment. You know, every lease has a rent, and it also has terms. And the, the problem from our point of view with this lease is we can't, because of the restrictions of having it be a relatively short lease, that would be shorter in most, most times than a underlying lease for space in the building. We can't match it up, say, if we get a restaurant, we could, we have an issue. If we could know that we had these spaces, it could be a different matter. But I think that your appraisal might be based upon a long-term lease where an owner can rely on parking spaces, not a, a lease that in effect can be taken away by the city, should they desire, you know, at the end of the lease.
I understand that, but it just seems as though the issue here is that you don't wanna pay for spaces that aren't used.
Yep.
And, um, but if the, if the cost per space remains the same, but you're only leasing the forty-five spaces along the side, you save this, you know, you save because you're not using the spaces in the rear, you're not leasing those anymore, they revert back to the city, and everybody happy.
Yeah, with the exception of the airport, because they're gonna take a five thousand dollar hit in their annual budget. The, um, because I believe these dollar figures, if I'm not mistaken, go into the airports. Budget checked correctly?
Well, if I may, not, not necessarily, because as, as Councilman Motello pointed out, the parking spot, or the cost per parking spot is, is extremely low. So you can probably offset some of that loss by increasing the cost per parking spot. You can save a little bit, you can achieve, you know, maybe not lose as much, but, um, and you won't, the biggest thing for you is you're not gonna have to maintain it. If that's what you're looking for. You know, if that's what you're trying to get around. But I'm not sure if, you know, if you bump up, instead of, what is it calculating to be seventeen dollars right now?
Seventeen now, and he wants to go down to about nine.
Well, I mean, if you keep it, or if you bump it up to twenty-five, or, you know, time some of these spots.
How many's on the side?
It's got forty-five on the side.
On the side. Instead of seventy-five, they don't.
Yeah, forty-five.
I don't know what that.
Well, he agreed to be paying less, so, you know.
Well, he'll be, in aggregate, he'd be paying less, but more per spot. Paul won't be taking much of a hit, but the big plus for you is, is less maintenance. You're, you'll still be paying the same, basically, you'll probably come up to be the same amount. And, uh, you know, but it'll be closer to, uh, you'll still be getting a discount and granted. I think it, it may not be the prime location in the middle of the city, but it, it still is, uh, and that's why it's discounted at maybe half of what it should be.
Being across the street.
It, that's still, I know, that's still is a valuable location.
Danbury, Carmona isn't exactly in the middle of Iowa.
It's not, it's, it's not the middle of Iowa. So.
Right, so David, work those on this, and let's back into a dollar figure, if you.
Yeah, if I may, before we do, you know, there's a couple of things going on here. One is probably the intent that the city had when these, when this, the planning commission explored the possibility of building those buildings in the first place. And we realized immediately there wasn't enough parking. We, we've got a solution for that, we happen to have some land, and we'll be happy to lease it to you. We get it, we, we get the property developed. It's not residential, they're not sending kids to school. We get taxes paid on this, and it's essentially a net gain for the city. So the parking spaces might have been to sweeten the deal. Well, we gotta look at this sort of, you know, globally here. We wanna maximize the income that we can get from the city, that's critical. I mean, that's our fiduciary responsibility to the taxpayers who essentially own this town that we live in. But you can do that in one of many different ways. We don't necessarily have to maximize the income on this parking space if it means we're gonna potentially lose a, a, a tax-paying property owner where it's gonna affect this business. We might be able to make it up in other ways. Dennis had a great idea by raising the rent a little bit, or at least valued a little bit on the parking spaces, renting out less of them. The, the other thing is, is that we kinda have him over a barrel in the sense that he, he needs these spaces to continue with his, his square footage requirements, but he doesn't need all of them, so he kinda has us over a barrel too. And as much as I'd like to give Paul as, as much money as I can, he, he doesn't need to rent seventy-five parking spaces. We can't force him to rent seventy-five parking spaces. He could say today, "Look, I'm, I'm, you know, I'm, forget it, I'm gonna take those extra thirty spaces off the, off the deal, I only want the forty-five, and this is what I'm gonna pay for them." So I, I think there's, there's a little negotiation that, that I, I think is, is clearly appropriate here.
Yeah.
There's a little, my, my figures that I gave, the eighteen and the fifty that I get, and the, the seventeen that he's paying now, and the, that, that was just a, to go from the general to the specific, 'cause it's hard to figure out, fifteen thousand dollars, and, and nobody knows what that means unless they deal with parking spaces. And frankly, that's not a, a skill set most people are walking around with. But we, we kinda know what we pay when we put money in the mirror.
We do it all.
Well, maybe you guys do.
We do that.
Okay. But, you know, I'm just, for the benefit of everybody here, I, I think what he was paying was a little bit low, and he wanted to go even lower, and that's probably not fair to our constituency. On the other hand, I, I think that we, we wanna work with him and, and do something that's fair for him also. He's been a, a really good neighbor, and he's been paying taxes, and it's been good for the city, so I, I would like to work this out. I think, Dennis, you're onto something.
Just one other point. The, um, if we, if we did decide, okay, we're gonna give the side, and we're gonna take back the back, what are we gonna do with the back? What would you do with the back?
We're behind the door. So it's like, we're taking back something that nobody's gonna use.
Well, yeah, you'll have to seal it off. But the problem with the side is, let's suppose that this whole thing falls through, what are we gonna do with it? The only way you can access it is through his property. So the practice.
Uh, I wouldn't say, yeah.
Well, unless you wanna put a lot of money in something.
Well, we could put a gate on the front, we could put a gate on the front.
The gate over the fence along the side.
We're talking about the horseshoe thing or something else?
Mr. Chairman?
Paul.
Having faced this issue back over a decade ago, when we were doing all the box covers around the airport, we put a crossing point in there on that point, in that area with a double wide opening gate. All I have to do is flip my fence, and I got the property back to the city with use for ourselves. I'm not landlocked.
Do you need it?
I could use it, I could always use property. But the point is that, or I'll take the fence that I put out there, that ten-foot-high fence, I'll cut a hole in it, and I'll put in what we're allowed to put in for a, for an opening, and run a road in there if I have to. That's.
For purpose, just to get the back to park?
Just getting back in the property. I can get back to my property. That's not the point.
But what are we gonna use the property for, Paul?
It's aeronautical use, it's an aeronautical piece of property to the airport, it's part of our planning development. It can either be used for commercial use, or it can be used for aeronautical. I'll just go back to my planners and say, "What can I put here?"
One second, David.
If I may. Did, did you have a use for that property when the billiards was in operation? I mean, did you use it like you thought you were gonna use it when your businesses were going? Well, we bought the shopping center from DeSano, who had entered into leases prior to our buying it. And Boston Billiards used the side lot, I guess about three nights a week would be used. But there was never any use of that back, that back lot. If I just might make one other remark, I think you're onto something in that we are allied here. It's in the city's interest for me to be able to bring in the best retail tenant as possible, between sales taxes and real estate taxes. You can see what we've done to the property. We renovated it, we've kept good care of it. We own the shopping center across the street. We're committed to being here. You do have me over a barrel in a way, in that you can have an appraisal done and say, "This is what the number's gonna be." And I, it's Russian roulette, I either have to take it or leave it. But nobody wants that to occur. And I think if you could see yourself to work with us and be reasonable with us, it will increase the chances that I can get a good tenant for that space, and that will make it back in spades in real estate taxes for the city. If I, the, because if, if this is a, and my thought is, if this is a temporary thing, then you would, you would temporarily block off the back lot, or, or work out some temporary arrangement, even if you put cement barriers or whatever, and then when your situation changes, or if your need changes, then, then you just negotiate something else. You know, I, I mean, you know, I, I think what Councilman Motello said about the rates and finding a new ground, because you don't wanna maintain something you, you really don't use very much, because you kinda have to right now. You know, when the snow comes down and you do all that, you got the old back lot that you gotta take care of and all that, and that's gotta be a, a cost to you. You, you don't wanna incur every time you have this kind of weather. And I, and that's from, from my perspective, I would think that would be a, for one thing, a cost savings for you and less of a headache. So there is a way to, you know, to kind of minimize the, the potential financial negative impact of losing a lease to, to our airport by maybe increasing on the other side, because the rates are kind of low. That, that's just.
Paul. Through the chair to Director Estefan. Paul, can you do something like park airplanes there? Is there any income generation you foresee that you could come up with in the next couple of years with that property, those parking lots?
Park airplanes, yeah.
You can? I mean, can you get rent for that?
Yeah, but you can't compare the two. I mean, you're aeronautical is aeronautical.
What could you get for an airplane parking space?
We get a buck and a quarter a month for an airplane.
Hundred and.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five dollars a month?
Yeah.
For an airplane space? And what's that, like, those three regular parking spaces? How many feet across? 'Cause a parking space nine feet wide.
It depends on how I lay it out. I mean, you, you got several places that are tw- uh, twenty-foot wingspans, 'cause it's based on a wingspan and tail length. So it depends on what I put in there.
Well, you'd be getting more for an airplane than you would for what we're getting now.
I know. Sure.
You'd be getting three times the money.
Do you need me any?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
We're gonna excuse Mr. Elbert. If I, well, just to follow, how much would it cost to convert that to airplane acreage or whatever? The question I would have before we get into any of that is, we're reinventing the wheel over there, is that something that's viable at this point in time? I mean, it's, it's, it's an option down the road.
Well, my, my point is, is that, is that either, either.
You know, I don't know if I'd wanna park my airplane on the other side of the airport.
I'm, I'm not saying that, I'm simply saying that there may be an alternative use for this property, and if there is, that's something that we need to know. If this is either we rent it to the Boston Billiards or we keep it fallow, that's important to know. If it's rented to Boston Billiards or rented to somebody else for twice as much, we need to know that too. What else is we saying?
We sunk the crossing point in there for a reason, and the reason was to put aircraft storage in the event we ran into a problem gaining access to our property. So the future was laid out long ago, and made sure that the city was protected from that standpoint, that we were not landlocked to that piece of property. And that the airport, who's responsible for that, that grass area, basically, and fence line there, would, would, at, at the appropriate time, would swing the fence, as I call it, move it over like this, and literally just put it right along the line, and, and then go back to the engineers under a grant and develop parking. If you, if you remember, on the other side of that runway, if you're looking at the runway, Boston Billiards is on your right, and there's an opening there on the left.
Right, big one.
That opening that was there, when the mall created the ponds, I immediately swung the fence and locked it in. Okay? That used to be the old parking for the fairgrounds. So I took our property and protected it by moving that fence line over. I didn't do that on the other side, because at one point, we had a soccer field in there for children to play. The city elected to not have it there anymore, so it stayed dormant for a while, and then they put in the horseshoe pits. And the horseshoe pits have been in there, but there's nothing to say that eventually that'll go by the wayside. If the horseshoe pits do not stay, then I would probably take that fence and swing it like I did the other side and be done with it.
Good.
But I wanted to make sure that the city had options for any situation to the best of our ability from a planning standpoint for the future.
Okay, so with all this we've said, let's come up with a new plan we're gonna present to the council moving forward on this, which is gonna have to go through the petitioner. So we need to talk to the number, do we wanna chop off the back and just lease the side? Do we wanna lower our things? Where we at?
Can we ask Corporation Counsel's opinion on everything that's going on? 'Cause we haven't really heard from, through the chair, if you may, if you please.
Anything specific or just general?
Just in general.
I, I understand a little bit more now about why Mr. Biddle came in with a lower rent for the rear, 'cause, you know, he indicates that he's not using the rear. Right? That's why it's three thousand. I, I don't have the dog in the race as far as what they end up doing, I mean, it's not, not no matter to us, except that the, the, one of the issues that the committee had mentioned last time was to make sure that there was a tax component incorporated in the lease, 'cause if Mr. Biddle remembers, I think that the leases did not have a tax component in it before. And the assessor does assess property the city leases to profit, you know, corporations. So that component would also have to be considered to be in the lease, you know, 'cause the assessor does assess that. As far as the, as to how much to lease, that's something that could be negotiated, maybe Mr. Biddle or the committee wants Mr. Biddle to go back and review everything and come back again to another meeting to determine what he wants to do, having heard everything. That's one thing that occurred to me, listening to the conversation. But it's really up to the negotiating parties at the end what it is, how much property we want to lease to Mr. Biddle's company. But the one thing we do know is that the zoning issue requires them to lease something.
Yeah, it's not at least twenty-three according to that.
Yeah, and that's, that's kinda where, you know, as, as I think Paul may suggest, you kinda have the company over a barrel. On the other hand, you know, who else would use this, et cetera. Now we know that Paul might use it. So to answer your question, Mary, you know, it's whatever we negotiate, and anything could be done. We just have to craft a lease that incorporates the taxes if you guys want that.
Follow-up, please. If, um, if Mr. Biddle only agrees to lease the side lot and the, the rear lot comes back to the city, would it be possible to put a contingency in the lease if, in the future, if he should get a renter in there who needs the additional property, that we could come back and renegotiate? So you, you know, so you're not locked into, you know, this lease?
We can do that, and Paul, being property owner, probably knows, we could create some kind of an option arrangement. We can have a lease for a dollar, which springs into a rent at the time that, that rear property's used, where the rent would be determined. where the rent would be determined, you know, in advance, that would pop up to whatever it is in, in a year or two, whenever that property's used. In the meantime, it would be a nominal rent, whatever. Could be ten dollars, a dollar, it could be a hundred dollars, whatever it is, as an option. So we have, actually have a lease for that property, but the lease would be a nominal amount. And then it would spring up when the time came.
Yeah, but if I may, you'd wanna have an escape clause on the city's part, because he's got, he's locked us up for a buck a year, and then all of a sudden, Paul needs to put some falcons there or something. We can't do anything. We're renting it for a buck a year for the next twenty-five years. That's, that's not gonna work. So in situations like that, you usually have a letter of understanding that you have first crack at it, instead of entering a little lease where you can do this. I, I'm not prepared to move forward on this. I mean, my, my motion would be to recommend to the council that we reject the offer and to send it back for, for renegotiation. But it doesn't get us any farther. Uh, but I, I can't, I, I can't accept this.
But let me ask you this. Do we really need to do that? Why don't we just push this off to another ad hoc? Do we go-
I mean, I'm not prepared to negotiate these numbers. That's what I'm saying. Either now or at another ad hoc. And I, I think the petitioner needs to come back with another offer. Something that's prepared. I, I, I'm not comfortable tying up the city with this negotiation. What I would like to see is the petitioner simply come back. And we could leave the ad hoc open. I, I guess we could do that.
That's what I was gonna say.
Come back with another offer. Sit down and say, "Okay, they're, they're, they're playing hardball, so we'll come back with something else," and, and then we can go. But, uh, that's fine. But I, I can't, I can't move forward on this.
No, I agree. I, I just, I, I would prefer to leave the ad hoc open rather than-
That's fine.
Go back out there and go through the whole reassignment.
Yeah, I didn't necessarily mean that. I'm just saying, I'm gonna make a recommendation. It would be to take no action or reject the offer, so. And that's not a motion, so don't-
That's what I was just gonna say.
That's not a motion. Does that require a second?
I was just like, okay, is that a motion?
Let's see, I just wanna see, Mr. Biddle, do you have anything else you wanna add? Cause that's probably the direction we're gonna go, is to push this off till you can come back to us with a better, with a, with a more-
I think, I think that makes sense, because in a month or two, I might have, I might have a tenant. And I might know if I can afford to pay for the back.
Right.
Maybe I'll get lucky, and I, and I find a tenant that I may need the parking in the back. And everyone will be happy.
Mr. Pinter, question to you. The, the taxes that are currently, correct, correct me if I'm wrong, there's no taxes currently being paid. We need to get that into tax.
There needs to be a tax component to the lease.
How do we make that happen as of like now, moving forward? I mean, do we?
Well-
Cause Mr. Biddle's gonna wanna use that as part of the number that he's gonna be working with.
Well, it's initially, we're in sort of a gap period right now. The leases have expired. The Biddle companies have been paying, I, I don't know what dates exactly, but they have been paying rent in the holdover period. But the issue has come up now where Mr. Biddle has advised that because of this vacancy, they're, they don't have a need for the rear, so perhaps they don't wanna pay the rear now during the pre, you know, during this gap period. We, the committee may wanna inquire of Mr. Biddle, and maybe there could be some kind of a, a verbal arrangement that could be codified for this gap period, where he would agree to pay a rent for a certain number of spaces for this gap time, and agree to pay the tax as assessed for this gap time. And then we could, when we finish up the final lease or leases, we could incorporate the final numbers in there. So there's really, um, two issues to consider. The gap period right now, the, the council committee may wanna, at least inquire of Mr. Biddle what the intention is for the gap period, and then come back and deal with the permanent issues later on.
So if we gave you a sixty, if we gave a sixty-day gap period, we're looking to A, collect the current rent as-
As, as, as used and off the existing lease.
Right, it's, it's currently being laid out, and, and collect the taxes accordingly.
Yes, yes. But that would-
I don't know what that would mean dollars-wise, cause I don't know what the tax rate is for Mr. Biddle to-
Well, he would have to agree to that, because right now, it's not in the present lease. But what is in the lease is a, is a legal holdover period, where if he occupies the premises, he would be paying in accordance with the lease that we have right now, until we could craft another payment arrangement for the permanent situation. But right now, we're in that never, never land of, you know, the leases are over. Mr. Biddle says he's using, he doesn't wanna use all of it. So maybe, you might need to address that, too. I, I don't know how that's gonna work out, but.
Can I speak, uh?
If you will, Mr. Biddle.
I, um, I'm not, we're not using any of it. Boston Billiards is closed. I legally need the twenty-seven lot spots when we lease Boston Billiards. So I can't sign a lease without having that worked out. So I'm a little bit of a jam there. We have to keep in mind that these appraisals or these numbers that are being thrown out of the parking space really are on a, what I would call a gross basis, with the total cost of it. Whether that's broken out by a real estate portion of the amount, and a base, base rent portion for the amount, it all needs to be looked at as one number. From our point of view, we obviously don't care if it's, how it's allocated by the city. But who wants to keep that in mind? I would, uh, I'd ra- obviously rather not pay, um, rent on, on a lease that, I don't have a lease right now, for something I'm not using. But if it will help the city, and as a show of good faith, you know, I'd be willing to continue to pay the rent on the side lease, even though we're not using it.
It's up today, though, you pay rent on both the side and the back, correct? You have it or you have none of it?
We paid rent up until, I think we paid rent through October or November. We haven't paid rent for December or January.
Through the chair. You're up a bit for twenty spots out of the seventy-five?
I think it's twenty-three or twenty-four here.
Dennis said twenty-three.
Twenty-three is what Dennis said.
Okay. Yeah, maybe I could pay a pro per portion share or something.
Yeah?
Paul.
Okay. I don't wanna make this unnecessarily complicated, but if Mr. Biddle terminates his agreement with us, I, I have to defer to Les on this one, but I, I would not be comfortable at that point when he wants to reestablish his relationship to us, um, doing it in an ad hoc fashion. I, I would almost consider sending it out to bid at that point. I would not wanna be accused of giving him a sweet reveal. I, I would prefer that he, that we, tonight, come up with some sort of solution as where he maintains control over those parking spaces, so that he can reestablish control should he need to down the road. He terminates, he terminates. And he goes to the back of the line. Just as an aside, Dennis was working on a interesting proposal for Worcester Village. It says nothing to the mall, but it may at some point to allow what's known as non-contiguous parking. It's a, it's a, it's a bit of a switch for Danbury, but you see it in a lot of cities where a hotel gets to go up an extra couple of floors if they have a parking garage down a block. Not, if, if we go to non-contiguous parking, the, the mall in particular might be very interested in those parking spaces. Overflow for Thanksgiving weekend and things like that. And at that point, there may be an increased feeling. I, I don't see us going to non-contiguous parking. That's way down the road. But if our relationship terminates tonight, starting it back up again might prove somewhat problematic, or at least not as, as, as easy as, you know. And I'll defer to you on that one, but it would seem to me that we would be, it would be like Hatters Park. We have to enter into a whole new thing again, and if we're gonna do that, we gotta publish in the newspaper and maybe even take bids on those spaces. And I don't think we wanna go there.
What's before, what's before the committee, Mr. Chairman, is, um, is a request from the Biddle company to engage in new leases. Okay? The gap period I was talking about, that kinda would, would be handled administratively. And-
It's not something we're-
The committee, you don't need to formally do anything with that. I just suggested that as a, to engage Mr. Biddle in some suggestion, because kinda right now, in the information about what he needs is kinda being talked about. So there's two, two ways to go about this. You could just, don't worry about the gap period. Let us handle it administratively based on this discussion. We can engage Mr. Biddle in a letter agreement for the holdover period, for the side lot, or whatever we talk about. And then you, your committee, Mr. Chairman, you continue, come back, and you receive information to engage in the future. Okay? So you don't need, you know, don't, you don't need to worry too much about the gap period. If, if we can come to an arrangement offline, we will do that. You folks can consider coming back. Mr. Biddle will have some information, and you guys then negotiate something.
So in line with that, what are we looking at, like a sixty-day? Was that enough time for you to put together? By then, you're gonna know if you gotta win rent or not, anyway.
It's pretty rough out there, right?
On this market, it could be, you know-
It could be a year.
It could be a hundred and eighty days easily.
Yeah, if I may. You, you might wanna, you know, come propose, what would your needs be if you did have a tenant? And then, you know, go on that assumption, because, uh, I, I think it, it probably would be easier to work from there than it would be to, to work from, up from there.
Okay.
Because you can always prorate that, you know? Let's say of the seventy-five, you only needed fifty. You know, uh, thirty-five on the side, or was it forty-five or thirty-five on the side?
It was forty-five.
Forty-five, right, and then ten in the back, or, or whatever it might be. And then, uh, um, they, you know, so you do some kind of, of prorated piece in the back. It, it, it's a lot easier to do that in a proposal, at least, uh, some kind of, uh, temporary thing. Not, not an extended ten-year thing, because I, I think you, you, it would be locking the city in, uh, for a temporary situation. Maybe not in the side lot, but in the back lot, it probably would, because your, your situation most likely will change for the better.
Okay, so, so what I think we're saying is, what we'll do is, we'll come up with a time period, and we'll decide what that is gonna be. Allow Mr. Biddle to go back to the drawing board, if you will, to, uh, to close the proposal for us moving forward. I don't wanna formally sit here and say, "We're gonna go to the council and reject this proposal." Let's get back Mr. Biddle's proposal, his new proposal, now that you have pretty much our facts and know where we stand on this. And, uh, in the meantime, administration will handle the, the finances through the gap period.
And just to address one issue that I think Councilman Rotella brought up, that concern about holding UB's rights to this property. If we engage in an MOU or a letter of agreement or something that's, that carries this with the existing lease, that would hold it, and you could even hold the rear parcel if the letter includes a dollar or a ten dollars, whatever, to hold that pending your final, if you wanna do that.
I would not, at the next meeting, I would need to be, be adverse to seeing an, an administrative agreement where he's leasing these spots, and he clearly doesn't need, he doesn't need any of them now, for a nominal, a nominal amount until such time as he gets a tenant and needs them, at which point he refunds us, or he re, not refunds us, but repays us the... We, we backdate the agreement. He repays us the agreement. There, there's no, it, it, he, I, I'm concerned that he maintains control of the lot. I'm also concerned that we don't believe him for parking spaces he doesn't need when he's got enough to build and has to continue paying taxes on it. So he pays us what he feels is fair for parking spaces he doesn't need. Bealman comes in, I don't even think they exist anymore, whatever, comes in and they want that space. We reach some sort of agreement on all the lots. Hopefully, he'll need them all. And then if it takes him eight months, and he just pays us the difference for the eight months. That way, I can go back to the voters and say, "Look, we got the full amount for all of these, but we didn't scare away again." You know, so I, I would not be against something like that.
Okay, so let's, let's-
An interim agreement.
Right, so with all that being said, let's come up with the days. How many days do we wanna let this run out there? He's gonna want a year. We're gonna wanna give him a week, so we gotta come up with something.
I don't think we can go more than sixty days on this.
I agree.
And I don't know if that's even gonna help him, but it will, it will give him a chance to have a, a, an agreement with administration.
Just so we're coming into the budget sheet.
To have an MOU with administration.
Mr. Chairman.
Just rest.
You whispered what I was saying.
Well, that's Mary for you.
My recommendation to the council is, committee, is to let him stay ninety days. My other question through the chair, if that's applicable, if it's allowed-
Please do.
To Mr. Biddle. When you do your leases, are they five and ten? They would say go out five, and then renewal at, for another five. How do you structure your lease?
For, for major tenants, for someone who is gonna lease that space, I assume it's gonna be a national tenant. They're gonna want at least a ten-year lease, maybe a fifteen-year lease. And then they're gonna want usually options that are at least as long as the initial term. So typically, it'd be a ten-year lease with two five-year options. If it was a tenant of the caliber of, say, Marshalls or TJ Maxx, they're gonna man probably twice as much in options, so a ten-year lease with twenty years of options. That's a little bit of the bind I'm in. I wish that I could get a longer commitment from the airport, because I get in an awkward situation. I can't-
Well, that's where I was going.
I can't guarantee those spaces.
I'm trying to find out how you handle yours without bringing you back to us all the time.
We don't wanna see every five years. If you, if you need thirty years, and that's the, you need thirty years, let's work it in there.
Let's work, you know, that strip, it's a strip to me. If I put the whole thing together, it's a different issue. But in this case, if you're, you gotta, when you come back to us, come back to us what you think is reasonable. Certainly, I wanna make sure that the city gets its fair share along the way in those timeframes. Do you follow me? I, I, we're trying to just balance the books at the airport, and I don't wanna leave them unbalanced. Okay? So I don't have a problem if you're gonna go ten years or fifteen, but I've gotta make sure that the city is protected all the way through that period of time.
Well, yeah, if we have a lease, I'm, I'm gonna be obligated to pay rent.
I, I understand that, but I'm just saying about the increases.
Well, the increases will be set forth in the lease, whatever we negotiate.
Okay.
It's understood there would be increases.
Package that you work out with.
And, and I was not opposed to going beyond five years.
Yeah.
As long as the city is protected along the way.
Okay, and maybe, you know, when I come back and knock on the wood, sixty days.
Uh, my recommendation is ninety days to the committee.
Yeah, the longer I can have it, the better. I would, I might be in a much better position to tell you, "I have a lease. These are the terms, and I'd like to have the term of the lease be co-termnis with the term of my building lease, so I don't get stuck in a bind."
I don't have a problem with that, Mr. Chairman, and I'm very sensitive to that.
Paul.
Les, can we go ninety days? I mean, we're not a standing committee here. We're starting to, we're starting to really stretch the sound.
I mean, ninety, typically, if a committee extends itself, or continues itself, or tables it, you know, you can go, typically it's thirty days or sixty.
Right.
You know, but if you table something, you can take it up at any time, reasonable time, I guess. I don't think ninety is that outside. If you go six months, maybe it's a problem.
Like, we'd go ninety.
But, you know, you, you, you make that decision, you're, you know, together, you know-
I don't wanna get in trouble, that's all.
You know, nobody's gonna call you on that. Ninety days is not that outside of market.
Take a motion, you guys.
I do have a motion. I'd like to make a motion to continue this committee in ninety days, and for Mr. Biddle to come back with maybe a new lease for us.
Hope so.
Second. Second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Um-
Motion, Jerry?
Yeah.
No move. Second. All favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you for your consideration, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Biddle, uh, Will, uh, Wayne, if you can, um, try to mirror your lawyer, uh, a, a le-